Tonight's forum is for the Laramie City Council candidates in Ward 1, approximately 9th Street to the west. There are seven candidates running for two places, one regular two-year term and one brief term to fill a vacancy. All of them were invited to participate. Before we get started, I'll go over some general information and forum procedures. As a courtesy to everyone, please turn off your cell phones. This would be a good time to do that right now. Recording of any kind is not allowed. We are video recording this session and it will be posted on the League of Women Voters website. On a back table, there are brochures regarding the League, including membership brochures. We also have a brochure on selecting a candidate. Please consider joining if you enjoy these forums, if you find them beneficial, consider joining the League. We also have on the back table free copies of our book, A Look at Wyoming Government. You're free to take one of those if you like. Candidates have been invited to provide their own literature on a separate table back there and so you're welcome to help yourself to that as well. Primary election will be Tuesday, August 21st. Polling places open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. You may vote early by completing a ballot at the county clerk's office or by requesting an absentee ballot from the county clerk's office through August 21st. Election information can be obtained from the county clerk's website or from a Wyoming Secretary of State's website. If you are not registered to vote or need to change voter information, you may do so at the county clerk's office through August 6th with a picture ID. You can also register or change your registration after August 1st through August 21st if you cast an absentee ballot at that time. And you may register or change your registration at your polling place on Election Day. If you have special needs, voting accommodations and aides are available at each polling place and through the clerk's office. The election judges can assist you and you can contact the clerk's office in advance. For example, if you have mobility problems and you would like them to bring the ballot to your car. In addition to voting for elected officials during this primary election, a 1% specific purposes tax is also on the ballot. Voters are asked to vote for or against this tax. A flyer explaining these projects was included in utility bills. I think this is the flyer. And there are some there on the back table. On one of the tables, namely that one, the pink papers are sample ballots for the primary election. We also have a ward and precinct map posted. Please don't take the paper ballots, the sample ballots with you. Those are our only copies. There are different ballots based on your location, residential location and so forth. This however, city council races are nonpartisan, so party affiliation does not show. The League of Women Voters of Laramie and Laramie Daily Boomerang's Voter Guide will be published on August 5th. That's a Sunday paper. The Voters Guide is also posted on the League's website and there are copies available in the library, county clerk's office and other places in town. We have other forums scheduled as well, but we have canceled the August 2nd forum because one of the candidates has dropped out and therefore there is no opposition in the primary election in either party. Of course, we will be having forums for the general election as well. At this time, we give an opportunity for other candidates here tonight who are not involved in the Ward 1 race to stand up and introduce themselves.
Jackie Graham is running for Representative, House District 46.
Pete Goso, running County Commissioner.
Chris Mackey, Ward City Council, Ward 3.
Paul Sowinski, Democratic candidate for Albany County Commissioner.
I currently serve, my name is Peggy Trent and I currently serve as your Albany County Prosecuting Attorney and I'm running for a secretary.
Anyone else here tonight? We will begin the forum with questions for the candidates. Questions are to be written down and can be submitted at any time from the audience. Just raise your hand and our question runner will come and pick it up for you from you and give it to our moderator here. We have pencils and pads of paper on each row of seats. Questions should be directed toward all candidates in a race, of course, not toward a particular candidate. Each candidate will be given 90 seconds to respond to each question. We have a timekeeper, candidates. The timekeeper will show you the amount of time remaining for your answer. Candidates, please speak clearly and into the microphones. You have to hold them pretty close to your mouth. Please, Mr. Massey is going to give you an opportunity to state your name because sometimes the names are hard to see from the back. Please also state which city council opening that you are running for. Either the short term, the short one or the full term. The moderator may edit the questions that he receives for appropriateness and may combine some, may condense some and in general has control. And he may ask further questions to help expand upon an issue and he also, he's allowed to break the rules just a bit as circumstances dictate. The last 20 or 30 minutes of the forum, we like to stop the questions and allow the public to speak to the candidates one-on-one. So, we will go until about 8:30. Last, we would like to thank, sincerely thank everyone who is running, everyone who has stepped forward to run for an office. And now, our moderator tonight is Mike Massey. He has a long career in education and public service, including teaching and legislative service in both houses of the state legislature. He served as Special Assistant to the President of the University of Wyoming and also as a trustee. Mr. Massey.
Well, what a great turnout tonight. Thanks for coming out and participating. It's all of you that are going to make this successful. So again, thank you. It's easy to figure out which candidates are running for which one of the two offices in Ward 1. The one office is filling an unexpired two-year term and the first four folks here are the ones running for that. The other one is for a full four-year term. And those are the last three on the end, all of whom their last name start with S. So if your last name starts with S, you're running for a four-year term. Everybody else is running for two years. Please share the microphones. There's two microphones there, so pass them along. Be nice to everybody. We want to make sure that we hear. And, let's see, I'm going to get started with this question, the first one. And with each question, I'm going to start with a different individual. And whoever I start with, it'll proceed to your left. And then when Andy finishes up, it'll come down here to the beginning and we'll start down this way. Okay, so here's the first question. First of all, state your name so the folks in the back will know who you're talking. Why are you running for city council? And why do you believe you have been or would be an effective city councillor? So Victor, go right ahead.
Hello, my name is Victor Bruszcinski. I'm a longtime West Laramie resident. I've lived in Laramie since 1974, I believe we moved here. I went to Slade School when we first moved to town and then moved to Linford School when we moved to West Laramie. And then moved through the junior high, high school. After high school, I went to the Marine Corps for a couple of years and was a radar technician in the Marine Corps. Came back to Laramie, went to the University of Wyoming, graduated in electroplum computer engineering. And took a job there after I graduated and decided I'd do it for a few years before I went off and found a real position. And here I am 24 years later. So it just kind of worked out that way. I'm an avid outdoors person. I love everything that Laramie has to offer when it comes to outdoor recreation. I think we have a great city and a lot of great people. And I would just like to see a higher focus on our quality of life here. Things from snow removal to mosquito control to public events that the city can sponsor and help out with. Things like street maintenance and things like that, the infrastructure that makes Laramie a livable city and is attractive to new businesses, existing businesses are all areas of focus that I would like to see the city council work on. And I'm not saying that I'm done. She told me to stop.
Casey Frome here. The reason I'd like to run for city council is just to serve the citizens of Laramie, to help create and make and institute good policy for the city. I don't really have an agenda or something I'm getting into city council to accomplish. I just want to get in there and make good decisions on the opportunities that become before the council. I have a background in business. Last 10 years, I've run various businesses. Also have a law practice that operate, small law practice and that, but still running. And also hold a Masters of Public Administration from the University of Wyoming, which gave me an edge, I guess, in coming up with good policy and thinking through the things that come before the council critically and hopefully asking the right questions and getting to the correct ends that we want to get to as a council. With that construction business that I've run, I've got a good working relationship with code enforcement inside of the city as well as I sit on the Board of Fire and Construction Appeals, the Board of Appeals for that. And so I just feel like I've got some decent experience that I'd like to contribute to the city of Miami.
Hello, everybody. My name is Brian Harrington. I'm a small business owner here in Laramie. I grew up in northern Wyoming, in a town that didn't have a lot of opportunity. We were really isolated and our economy was in the tank. And my parents worked incredibly hard to make sure that us kids were provided for, but it felt like no matter how hard they worked, they could never really get ahead. Seven years ago, I decided to chase my dream and become a small business owner. I did this as a huge risk to myself and my family. I started my business with a loan from my parents that they took against the equity on my childhood home. So I knew that there wasn't going to be a second chance. I quickly found out that Laramie is a special community. I found the support that I needed to succeed almost immediately and I still attribute that to my success. I personally benefited from the buy from your neighbor part of Laramie. So when I considered running, I knew that I wanted to run because I want everybody who wants to chase their dream to have the same opportunity that I had when they do that. Laramie has a lot of trouble on the horizon. We are looking at a lot of my peers moving for opportunities elsewhere. At the same time, we're feeling the pressures from growth. So I want to help manage that growth so that it preserves and enhances our quality of life here in Laramie and so that it benefits all of our residents and not just a few. So that is why I'm running and that's why I hope all of you will vote for me.
Hi there, everybody. Quick disclaimer, my name is Tim Nichols, Tim S.W. Nichols. No relation or I'm not married to President Lori Nichols. So that's my disclaimer for this evening, but let me tell you who I am. So, I'm running for the two-year term, obviously. Again, why? Why are we running for city council? I think all of us have different reasons. But my reason is simply this, I want to provide the Laramie citizens, my neighbors, my community with a voice. I also want to, more so, is that I'm running because I care. I care about my community and I care about my neighbors. Over the past year, I've seen the state economy affect Laramie and my family and I want to lend a helping hand to my neighbors and my community in any way possible so that I can make sure that Laramie sees, along with eight other council members, sees a brighter future. That being said, my experience, I have heavy experience in accomplishing roles as a team, working together to get things done. I have years of leadership experience, effective and proven record of making good decisions that make good things happen for other people. I'm in the transit area of the university and I have made a career out of working for others. If I don't better the lives of other people every day, I haven't done my job.
Hello. Hello, my name is Jason Chu. I'm running for the four-year term for city council. I grew up in Cheyenne. I grew up here in Laramie also, with football and basketball for sports. I'm running, work for UW in ResLife. And I'm running because I hope to be able to help the citizens of Laramie.
Would you please speak into the mic?
Is that better? Sorry. I'm running because I want to serve the community and help the residents of Laramie to find a better quality of life, a higher quality of life, to, from, try to get jobs, higher paying jobs, better jobs in Laramie and try to help the city in any way I can. I want to serve and help as any way possible.
Hi, I'm Jessica Stolter. I'm running for the four-year term because my name starts with S, apparently. And I just want to say thank you first to the League of Women Voters for putting this on and, you know, letting everybody get to meet the candidates. My grandma was a member of the League of Women Voters here in Laramie for about 30 years. My grandparents were raised here, my parents were raised here, I'm raising my son here. And this is my home. That's why I want to run for city council. I think that in order to keep the future of Laramie on the right path, some different decisions need to be made. And those decisions, they need to be made by people who care about Laramie, not necessarily politicians. I'm not a politician, I'm a nurse. And I think I bring some different things to the table. One of the things I really want to focus on is making Laramie an age-friendly place. We have a lot of seniors in Laramie that are on a fixed income. It's important to me to support initiatives that support affordable housing for seniors and support quality of life for seniors. On the other end of the spectrum, I think it's very important to support our young people. They're our most important resource and they're leaving Laramie, whether that's for shopping or for better jobs. But I care about people. I couldn't be a nurse otherwise. And I believe in listening to find out what the problem is, but also what caused the problem. And really to focus on how to solve the problems through, you know, looking at the root cause and not just treating the symptoms, I guess. And I'm done, I guess. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Andy Somerville. I am the current Ward 1 City Council member. I've been in this position for five years. I currently serve as Laramie's mayor and I've done that since January of last year. And I am honored to serve everybody in this capacity. I originally got into this five years ago, probably not knowing exactly what I was getting into, but I got into it for my kids and for Laramie's future. That was my motivating reason when I started this, was trying to make sure that Laramie continued to be the place where my kids could live, we could raise our kids well, they would want to come back to, that this town is everything that it could be. And what I found when I got into this job was that it's more than anybody can ever imagine until you sit in the seat. I went in thinking this community was awesome and had heart and I had no idea how much heart this community has. The organizations in Laramie run, that helped run this city, the partnerships that we were able to make. I am asking for a second year term because I want to continue to work with all of those organizations that make Laramie what it is. I want to continue to build our future for our kids. We have started some really good things here in Laramie. Specifically, I want to continue to focus on infrastructure building. I want to focus on our quality of life for everybody that lives here as well. And then lastly, in addressing the youth leaving our cities, we need to address the jobs and opportunities that we have and entrepreneurship availabilities that we have. So, thank you, everybody.
Okay, thanks. Good start. So far, we have about 20 to 25 questions, so we're good. I think probably about 2:00 or 3:00 a.m. I am going to try to combine questions that are very closely related as much as possible so that we can have as wide of a breadth as possible of questions that folks can answer and deal with a lot of the good issues that you're bringing up. So here's the next question and we'll start with Tim on this one and then of course go to his left. Acknowledging council members serve the entire city, what are some of the concerns of Ward 1 residents and what would you do about them?
Number one, infrastructure. That has been the number one heavy hitter. What do we do about it? We need more money, right? With no money, we can't pay roads. So how do we get money? If you follow my campaign so far or even seen anything, you'll see economic development attached or right onto it. And underneath it, you'll see sustainable infrastructure. You can't do one without the other. We've got to push economic development. We've got to bring more sales dollars into this town. We've got to make sure our citizens have good paying jobs that allow them to shop in Laramie and bring that money back here instead of taking it elsewhere. The city must focus on economic development. If we do not, we will be condemning our citizens to a quality of life that is just, they deserve better.
There we go. Like Tim said, we need to, infrastructure. In West Laramie, the roads are falling apart. The sewer, storm sewer system is old and needs replaced. But again, that falls into jobs where people can spend money in Laramie to keep the money in Laramie. So, we have those finances to do, to fix the infrastructure in the city. Right now, it's not that we can't. We have to start somewhere. And the city council now has their, they have to start at one end or to the other. But we need to find a way to keep that money rolling and keep the projects working through West Laramie.
I think it goes without saying, everyone at the table is going to say we need more money. And I think we also need to be realistic about what we can do with the money that we have and how we can increase our revenue. I think that the city of Laramie can be really instrumental in supporting Laramie businesses so that people aren't going to Fort Collins to shop and also creating jobs so that people have money to spend in Laramie. The serious issues, I think obviously are infrastructure, as everyone has mentioned already. And I think the thing that we can realistically focus on is the drainage in West Laramie. I know the streets get very muddy. There's kids walking to school on muddy streets. And we need to figure out how to fix that realistically with the money that we do have.
So you're not going to hear much different from me. Something that I've been working on since I've been on council is to address the drainage and infrastructure issues that we have. However, they're not just in West Laramie. They are also in other parts of Ward 1, 1st and 2nd Street, don't have any pavement and have terrible drainage issues. There are drainage issues on 4th and 5th Streets. It is, is rife, all the way through Ward 1. And some of it is a combination of old infrastructure, a lot of it is no infrastructure. And this discussion, we have been kicking this can down the road since 1969 when West Laramie finally came into the city. And we keep fighting off little tiny pieces. And what we need to do is have a long-term, sustainable plan. It might be a 20-year plan on how we bring this infrastructure up to grade, if that's what our revenue is allowed for. But we need to have a plan and put it together. The other piece that we need to continue to look at is economic revitalization in all sections of Ward 1. The West Side Neighborhood and West Laramie, we need to make sure that we are working with the businesses so that those properties are being redeveloped or sold so that they can, they can continue to generate sales tax for the city. We need to continue to work with downtown Laramie to make sure it is the core spot that everybody wants to go to and that everybody's continuing to pay their money and generate sales tax revenue. So, I'll just leave it there.
I think I'll echo a lot of what the other candidates have said, but infrastructure has got to be the biggest focus. And I agree wholeheartedly with Andy that we need a long-term plan and long-term planning. The piecemeal approach we've taken to infrastructure for too long has crippled certain areas of the city. And it's not just West Laramie proper. We've got Cottonwood, Riverside, we've got the downtown area as well as an area of town that I think is quite underserved with the student population down to the west of campus. And so all of these areas can be, can be served better through a long-term plan for infrastructure improvement. There's not going to be any easy answers. The money isn't growing on trees. People have got to be willing to invest in their own community. We've also got to make a better effort of going after federal and state grants for infrastructure improvement. Not lose opportunities that we have to go after the big grants for community improvement. I think the new bridge remains to be seen, but I'm anxious to see how that affects traffic flow, emergency services, everything else in West Laramie. It's going to be fun. I hope to see everybody at the grand opening here in a few days. Should be pretty cool.
The size of Ward 1, it makes this an interesting question because you've got all the way from the university, all the way out to the airport. And so lots and lots of different folks reaching for different things. I'll echo what most people have said, infrastructure, what a great day to prove that with the torrential rains we had in West Laramie. We can see there's drainage problems and bit by bit, those are getting addressed. However, there's more that can be done. People live in West Laramie for a reason. Sometimes it's cost-effective, sometimes it's for that semi-rural lifestyle. And so I think we should be cognizant of how we proceed because of that. There's, again, there's lots of different interests in this ward. What I would do, I would continue the six penny tax. That sure gives the city of Laramie quite a bit of money to deal with some of these issues. Continue applying for grants. It was nice to see the city council applying for the Build Grant, even when possibly things aren't totally complete. And then also see, things have been cut from the budget. See if there's anywhere else possibly squeeze a little bit more money. In government, you can either raise taxes or decrease spending. And so it'd be a combination of both of those. And then one other thing is continue the support for Wildtech. That was great to see that's taken over, but to help that build up because that's a huge part of West Laramie.
When I decided to run for city council, I started talking to voters in West Laramie. The, probably the most common question other than why are you running is what are you going to do about streets in West Laramie? So, like everyone up here, that is the conversation we have had with voters over and over again. But I think what's important to know is, as I've talked to those people, it's not just that we want paved streets. You know, while the majority probably do, I think it's also important to note that some people do like living on the more rural dirt road idea. Some people want a paved street, but they don't want a gutter and a curb and sidewalk, all of that. They want ditch drainage, but a paved street. So I think this, this is a pretty complex question because there's so many different people with so many different ideas of what's going to happen on their streets, maybe even neighbor to neighbor. But what I think the most important part of this is that regardless of where you live in Laramie, you deserve access to safe and well-maintained roads. So, you know, I think you could apply that safe principle to things like you deserve to have a tornado siren that goes off when there's a tornado. Those things are crucial and West Laramie seems to get the short end often. So I think that as we move forward, I think the general guiding principle is everyone deserves safe and well-maintained roads. If we keep that in mind as a city council, I think that that's the most equitable way to do this.
Okay, our next question, we'll start with Andy. And this is somewhat of an overlap to some of your responses to this last question. But let's nail it down. Laramie's revenue has been going down year after year. How would you re- How would you reverse this as a city councillor, and what's your stance on the six cent tax?
So I can't think of another topic I spent more time talking about during the last three years than Laramie's revenue, and what we're going to do to fix the issues. It is multifaceted. There is not a one Band-Aid is going to fix all solution here. We have to have a toolbox, a variety of ways to take a look at this, and that's something that we've been asking the state legislature for. I've been working with the Wyoming Association of News charities to bring that forward, to get the state legislature, who hold basically all the keys to all the revenue generation in the state, to let go a little bit and give cities, and especially Laramie, the options to take things out to their voters. Whether it's we want an additional sales tax, whether it's we want to look at additional property taxes, whether it's we want a sin tax, maybe we want to tax tobacco and alcohol here. Maybe we need to have a little bit more, more room to work with those kind of things. Our system for revenue generation is very, very restrictive. We are 50th in the country in terms of dependability on our states for revenue, which means we have the least amount of flexibility of any other state. And that sounds pretty strange for Wyoming, and the life that we live. So I support the six penny tax renewal wholeheartedly. I think it is going to be the way to fund our infrastructure going forward. And I also am open to different conversations about how to continue to increase that. I will sit up here and tell everybody in this room that the city budget doesn't get any thinner without stopping services. So if there are services you don't want to have that we cannot spend money on, I am all ears, but it's going to take snowplowing completely out. It'll take, we only have 50% of our street staff on board right now.
We certainly, both at the university level and as well as the city level, have felt the thin pinch from the state budget. We've got to figure out a way to squeeze more money out of the state and federal level. But as a community, we also have to be willing to invest ourselves in our infrastructure, in our neighbors, in our city. If we're not, as Andy said, it's a give or take. We've either got to pay for the additional services and infrastructure, or we've got to be willing to give up the chance to have some plowed side streets, so we have safe access for side streets. Maybe the West Side gutters don't get improved, and so every time the river floods, the West Side fills up, things like that. But, I mean, these things have got to be taken care of, and the city as a whole has got to be willing to invest in these things. I just, I don't see any other way around it if that comes from support of the six cent, or possibly more, on the sales tax as well as a potential property tax increase. There's got to be something to increase that revenue.
As I previously stated, I support the six cent tax. I don't have the power to institute that. I'd better clarify that. I'd encourage people to vote for the six cent tax. I would continue searching for grants. I think, I think the city of Laramie has done a great job searching for grants everywhere they can, out of necessity sometimes, but even just, just to fulfill the needs of the city of Laramie. Last year, the only, the only two cities with population increase was Laramie and after Wyoming. I would say continue getting the population increase, that increases the tax base. So doing what we can for economic development, for property development is going to help. There has been some great strides. Lots of businesses have been brought into Laramie. I think a lot of times we focus on the bad. Life's pretty good in Laramie. There can be improvements, certainly. And then the, one, one other thing with the property purchase for the county. Voluntarily, people are contributing to that. That could be another avenue that revenue could be created here in Laramie, of creating projects that people would want to spend money on. Until I get in the council seat, I won't know the rest of the story.
I think that this question really kind of gets at the heart of the economic conversation in Laramie. So oftentimes, the conversation kind of turns towards what can we cut? What more can we make skinny to get by? But I think what's more important than that is, and the person asking the question was spot on, how do we generate more revenue as a city? So, you know, I think that the first is going to be that we have to continue to push for economic diversification, really knowing that sales tax is going to be our biggest contributor of city funds. That should tell us all that because our hands are so tied from the state, that that is what we should all be working on. So we really need to continue diversifying our economy here. But I think to do that, that takes a holistic approach to, to what it means to have a healthy economy. So to, to hold on to younger people, to hold on to small businesses, to tech businesses, the things that we want to bring in, we have to take a more holistic approach to our economy. This has to be an equitable place, a place where everybody has equal access to our economy, community, and to opportunities. If we can do that, our economy will continue to diversify.
I'm going to echo Mayor Somerville on the table there. This has to be a multifaceted approach. Putting all your eggs in one basket is just asking for failure. Generating revenue, and by the way, big supporter of the six penny tax. Generating revenue can be done in multiple ways. Obviously, my main focus is going to be economic development. Diversification mentioned right over there. Eggs in different baskets. We got to talk about jobs. We got to talk about better, better jobs, offering more money for our citizens, generating additional sales tax. I don't know if a lot of people know that actually property tax increase will not generate very much revenue. Property tax doesn't, doesn't stimulate that much. However, sales tax is where your bread and butter is going to be. So if we can increase that, we're going to increase the budget, or at least have some flex in our budget at that point.
I'd agree the six penny tax is going to help quite monstrously within the city. But like Mayor said, and a lot of others, we need to diversify our base we can. We're trying to get money from so few different areas, the money's going to dry up. We need to find a way to get businesses into Laramie that people will spend money on, and those businesses bring money into the city. We need to, like Mayor said, work with the legislature to open up, to find a way to let the city tax different items within the city in different areas, so we can build the revenue.
The thing that I see is the most important to creating revenue is for the city to develop a better comprehensive plan for growth, rather than just focusing on every cost as it comes up, whether that be snowplowing this year. But again, we need to look at economic diversity, as several people have mentioned. You know, we need to look at tourism, whether that's the Pilot Hill project, or different ways to stimulate tourism in the economy. We have a lot of tech startups in town, and I think we need to do our best to support those. Or look at bringing advanced manufacturing, those are very good, high-paying, benefited jobs into Laramie. And just really invest into businesses, small businesses that will support the economy, and support their growth rather than putting up different roadblocks. Those are the businesses that are going to create jobs, and that's the opportunity to expand on our sales tax base. I absolutely support the six penny tax. But I think it's important, and it says something wonderful about our government in Wyoming, that that's something that the voters can choose, whether or not they want the six penny tax. There needs to be an ongoing conversation with the parties who are paying the taxes.
Okay, moving right along. We'll start this next question with Casey. And this is an attempt to combine several questions on this topic. So this is one of the hot topics for folks out there. Is Laramie sufficiently supportive of business development? If not, what do you propose to do?
It is a hot topic. Certainly is that. I, I don't know if I have sufficient information to give a good answer on this. I feel that they do quite a good job of bringing businesses into Laramie. Of course, just like anything, there's ways to improve. The improvements, potential things that I would think of would be to work closer with the University of Wyoming, entrepreneurship programs, different, different programs there, in order to streamline potential openings for businesses, siding businesses, et cetera, to keep, to keep those businesses here in town. As far as the actual things that the Chamber does in alliance with the city of Laramie, I see them at work, but I don't know all the, all the ins and outs that goes on behind the scenes. And so to give a, to give a perfectly clear answer, I'd probably have to have more information as to if we could do more.
As somebody who has started and succeeded in business in Laramie, I would say it was not something that I think would have worked for me anywhere. I do think that Laramie is a particularly supportive community to start and grow a business in. We have incredible partnerships between the LCBA, the Laramie Chamber Business Alliance for holistically businesses. We have great partnerships between them, Main Street, the city, for downtown businesses specifically. And then I think the university is oftentimes a decent partner at helping with businesses. So there are programs I specifically benefited from at the Wyoming Technology Business Center that helps to grow tech businesses and, and in turn, creative businesses to try and make Laramie more interesting. So between that and some college of business partnerships with Main Street and other groups, I really do feel like Laramie is a, is a particularly supportive community for business. So, you know, I think moving forward, there are ways that we can improve always. So I think the community as a whole, being able to provide more opportunity for more people is always going to be where this conversation comes back to, so that we again can continue to generate more sales tax revenue and fix some of these other problems that are probably talked about at these forums every two or four years. So, you know, I think, I'm done.
Timing is everything. That's right.
I've spoken with a lot of business owners, and some, some believe Laramie is very supportive in business development. Some believe there are certain roadblocks. Honestly, first thing you can do is, if they do believe there are roadblocks, let's provide some transparency. A lot is the bureaucratic process that steps right in front of somebody. So let's provide some coordination. Obviously, we have the Wyoming Business Council, we have LCBA. Let's coordinate some services there, allow some direction through the process to make things a little more efficient for businesses to come in and develop in Laramie. Obviously, I believe UW is a great resource, and that's not just because I work there. But they supply, you know, an unlimited amount of new entrepreneurs every year. What do we need to do to develop those entrepreneurs, bring them here? Every company started somewhere, and why can't it be here?
Overall, from what most business owners have said, is the city is, does help, but they would like to have some more. I don't know how much information's given to those businesses to go to UW to get that kind of help. What we need to do to get those people there? There's different aspects that people would like to start their business, have no idea how to go about it, and don't know where to start, and we need some way to help them figure that out.
So in the course of my campaigning, I've talked to a lot of business owners, both large businesses and small businesses. And I think that there is a lot of pressure in the city of Laramie that increases the cost of doing business for business owners. And it's important to be really transparent about what those costs are going to be upfront before they've submitted multiple proposals and then find out that maybe they need to make improvements to infrastructure to open their business. You know, so what I would suggest is to have coordinated meetings with city staff when somebody is opening a new business that involves any kind of infrastructure improvements, you know, planning, fire, any of those departments, so that business owners know upfront what the cost of doing business will be, and that they can apply for grants or whatever is needed, just to know those things upfront is the main concern that I've heard from business owners. As some of the other candidates have mentioned, I don't completely understand what that looks like from the city side and what is involved there. So that's something I'm looking forward to learning more about, to come up with a comprehensive solution. That being said, I'll echo what some of the other candidates have said about Main Street being very, very, very supportive to small businesses and the university. I've been through some of the university's entrepreneurship programs, and been connected to some small business resources. I think we do a great job of that.
So I would say holistically, yes, the city of Laramie is very supportive of new business. New business drive sales tax, which drives our revenue, which drives our quality of life. So it's all very important. We do that in a few different ways. We have fee-for-service agreements with the Laramie Chamber Business Alliance that provides our economic development and recruitment for the city of Laramie. We have a fee-for-service agreement with Laramie Main Street, and they have turned into just kind of sprucing up downtown 10 years ago to now they run basically a business incubator, as well as a host of other things. But we rely on them pretty heavily. We're also good partners with the WTBC. But one of the things that I would say is, is that the landscape has changed significantly from what the city used to be able to do in terms of economic development and business recruitment even five years ago. The state budget cuts put a pretty big hole in the number one funding source for cities to do economic development, which is the Wyoming Business Council. They've gone from, you know, allocating $16 million to $20 million a quarter to less than four. And that Bright Agrotech, Hivez, Tungsten Heavy Parts are all Business Council projects. Big Hollow in downtown is a Business Council project, and we realistically do not have those resources in our future. So we need to change what we're doing. And one of the ways that we are doing that with the city council this year, one of the goals is, under economic development, is specifically entrepreneurship. And how do we create more opportunities? We work with our LCBA Government Committee. If there's any issues with development code, when business owners come into the city, they bring us solutions. So we look at those, and I'll stop there.
I think from what I've observed, Laramie is very supportive of both new and existing businesses. A number of the large businesses, you go to the Chamber banquet every year, and you see just a number of vibrant people and businesses, both startups and existing large businesses. I know a lot of the businesses are in a heavy hiring mode right now. There's a lot of job openings in, in some of the larger businesses in Laramie right now. What attracts the existing businesses to stay here? Well, this is our home. And so what do we need to do? We need to improve the quality of life to keep our businesses here and growing. And that's also the same thing that's going to attract the new businesses. I don't think we can just throw money to attract new businesses. We really have to encourage the organic growth of the local businesses and local entrepreneurs and startups with Endow, the WTBC. I've worked with another, number of the inventors over there in an engineering capacity, and they have some great ideas. A lot of them may never see the light of day, but those are the type of things, such as the Bright Agrotech. Those are the things that are going to hit home runs from, from time to time. And that's why we need to take the, take the chance at some of these startups to do everything we can do to encourage these startups to stay here when they hit it big. I hate to see that Bright Agrotech may end up out on the coast instead of keeping the majority of their operations here.
Great. We're at about the halfway point now, and I want to commend all of you for responding to these questions directly. If you had stayed home tonight and watched the debates on TV, you would not have that experience, I suspect. So good choice to come down here, greatly appreciated. But they're working hard, and this is thirsty business, and they're drying up. Is there any water in the house? A pitcher of water that, that we could still come back up for the next 45 minutes? And being baseball seasons, we indeed do have pitchers. So we'll start this next question with Jessica. Next question, we'll start with Jessica, and here it is. Do you support Laramie's LGBT nondiscrimination ordinance? Do you support Laramie's LGBT non-discrimination ordinance?
I absolutely, I absolutely support Laramie's LGBT community. My mom was a ballet dancer and I grew up with this community before, before it was truly accepted. I think it's important for everyone in Wyoming to have the same access to jobs, the same access to all the resources that this wonderful community provides.
I absolutely do support the non-discrimination ordinance for the LGBTQ and I also support the community in general. I think it's an extremely important thing for Laramie to step out and show that community support. We have a little bit of a history here in Laramie that we need to combat statewide. People have a, have a, have an idea when they come into Laramie and we need to do everything we can to show them that the community that we actually live in, the community that, that is, this is truly. I get a little concerned when I still hear stories across the state of people that couldn't rent a house, couldn't get a job, and we certainly never want that to be in Laramie. We are a university town. We need to be welcoming, inclusive. Everybody needs to feel safe and they can all go to school, have fun, work here for everybody.
I do support the LGBT initiative. I think that everybody needs the same level playing field. And if that takes a little bit of, of changing of some of the underlying attitudes and it takes an ordinance to do that or an initiative to do that, I support that. I think with the university, I think we have a, a very open community here. It feels like that from, from my standpoint and even for the past 20 years with, with friends and family that were in the, the gay community and grew up here and felt fairly welcome. I mean, they, they really didn't feel that discrimination, but they did feel the need to move elsewhere when they, when they matured and, and moved on. And so there is definitely a, I think, maybe something that they don't get out of a, a small community that, that maybe we could do better at providing. And I think the university helps with that.
I support equality amongst all people and all movements. I haven't particularly read the LGBT non-discrimination ordinance, so I can't speak exactly to the ordinance. However, if, if that's what it takes to get equal treatment, then, then kind of so be it. What concerns me with, with the general idea of having certain, certain classes or certain movements protected is then we're all of a sudden on an unequal playing field. That this group is, has protections that this group doesn't. And that's a concern that I have. Without reading, without having read the ordinance, I can't speak to that exactly. But the fact that many people are screaming for equality yet wanting special treatment is concerning. I think every, every, everybody should have an equal chance and be equally treated. How, how we go about doing that should, should take a lot of special thought.
You know, I was, my business was one of the early supporters of the non-discrimination ordinance as they floated around town and asked businesses to sign on. My business was an early supporter. Still, I am a supporter of the non-discrimination ordinance. I think that when you talk about this, you know, I, I think if you, if you can't come to terms with the fact that you should be protected and unable to be fired for your orientation or really any part of who you are, just frame it economically to yourself. We can't keep companies like, like plenty if they decide to move, you know, like these are things about Wyoming that if we don't have them, they disqualify us before we get started. So I think that the non-discrimination ordinance in Laramie is a big step towards that. It seems like Jackson is soon to follow suit as soon as next week. So, you know, I, I think Laramie is a great model for the rest of the, the state to look to as, as to how to diversify your economy successfully. So I think you do that through things like a non-discrimination ordinance.
I'm going to take this in two different approaches. One is, you know, being an employer in the city of Laramie, this, I am 100% in support, but the fact that it was necessary is kind of unfortunate. When I came out and said I am a huge supporter of neighbors, helping neighbors, that's not just something that was conveniently grabbed off of, oh, that makes, that's going to sound good. That hit me to my core. Neighbors helping neighbors isn't amount who you are or what you are, it's amount of you are my neighbor and I will do whatever it takes to help you out. And so who you are, what you are makes no difference. And, and the fact that we need an ordinance for it, I'm a proud supporter of it, but it's just unfortunate that that's, that's what had to happen.
I am a big supporter of it. I think, I think it was needed with some of the attitudes in Wyoming, that a lot of people have problems with that. But like Tim said, it shouldn't be about what you are, it's about who you are. But I think it was needed at the time and probably still does.
Now that everybody is sufficiently watered, we'll head for the next question and we'll start with Brian on this one. Is there sufficient low-income affordable housing in, in Laramie? And if not, what should the city council do about it?
You know, I think you can talk to any young person in Laramie that has had to rent a house and they will tell you at least one horror story of a place they lived that there's no way that was up to code. So I guess my short answer would be I do not believe there's a, a sufficient amount of affordable housing. As we're looking at growth, I, I think the important, one of the important things is to make sure that we don't grow in a way, you know, grow so quickly that we're unable to provide housing for people. Cause that's really what's going to make it more costly is, is just scarcity on the market. So if, if we are to grow, which I think is probably inevitable at this point, I think that affordable housing is something we need to be thinking about often. And on city council, I think that's certainly something all of us should want to do. I, I particularly would want to do that.
Quick answer? No, there's none. My wife and I just bought, bought a home two years ago and we have two combating forces going on. One is our median household income. Not very good. And two is the price of our homes. Our average, our average house is above 200, if I remember, it's 208, 210, somewhere around there, $1,000, which is over the state average by over $20,000. These two combating forces do not generate a healthy affordable housing market. How, how or what we do about that, obviously it might sound like a broken record, good jobs. If we live in Laramie, we should get paid for Laramie expectations. You know, I'm not a big supporter of regulation, you know, you can only sell a house for however much. No, that's not what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about is we need to match the market. Let's match the market with the jobs that we all hold so that we can better afford that quality of life that is so precious here in Laramie.
Just like everybody else, no, there is not enough low-income housing. Any single parent with that is hard pressed to afford a house in Laramie. Prices, even rent prices are ungodly in the City of Laramie. Some of the rent prices here are equal to the rent prices in Denver, which we do not have the economy to support that kind of rent. The city council, it's another one of those things. It's, we have to find a way to either get more low-income housing or get the jobs to support the 200, 220,000 dollar houses in Laramie.
So far, the unanimous decision is there is not enough low-income housing. And I would even say that there's not enough reasonable housing for people that have the median income. And I think the reason for that is there's not enough supply of housing. I was reading the city's housing plan and they've identified the need for, for example, almost 200 new apartment houses or apartment units in downtown Laramie, you know, to support everything we talked about tonight, whether that's young professionals or students. I agree with, I think it was Brian that said that everyone's had a horrible experience with a landlord. And I don't think there's a lot of incentives for landlords in this town to provide nice housing because someone will rent their basement. And I think the most important thing the city council can do is support the addition of more available units to the market. The more available units we have in the market, the more it will drive up the quality of available units. Low-income housing is very close actually to the market rate of what you can rent an apartment for if you're just looking at credit list or anything like that. So that's something the city council needs to address.
I feel like this question came from our Tuesday night meeting at city council where we talked about housing. So the unanimous verdict, I think from, from the council and I certainly I support that is that we definitely have to do something with low, low-income affordable housing and affordable housing in general in Laramie. And we need to get on it and we need to get going before we turn into Jackson. We don't, we don't need those problems here. So the, there's a couple of things that we talked about. We need to support rental units and, and units purchased in several different ways and we need to, we need to have a diverse portfolio. We can't just put in low-income housing, like you see in like the Glacier Place Apartments and there's been I think three projects done in Laramie in the last five years that are traditional low-income housing. What we are seeing is, what Jessica said, is those rents are darn near market rate. So they're not really getting at that group that can't afford to make that rent payment as it is. The housing study and the discussions we had on Tuesday night point to some, some different ways that we can go about it. We need to encourage rehabilitation, especially in the tree area of older houses that are falling apart, either for purchase or rent through good policy and incentives. We need to keep a closer look, eye on our rental stock. We have the highest rental rate in the state for a county, it's over 50%. The closest county is like 12 points, percentage points behind us. So we need to keep a closer eye on that. We need to continue to look at the programs that are available. We need to get the state more involved in this conversation. It's not a big state push right now and to access the federal money, it almost needs to be a trifecta of federal, state and local.
I think there is certainly a shortage of reasonably priced both homes and rentals in Laramie. And I think if we alleviate one problem, we're going to alleviate the other. The problem I think stems from lack of rentals, so people want to snap up the houses around campus. There's no incentive for them to improve these properties. There's now, I've seen some really nice apartment buildings going up, smaller units on blocks that where the houses have been scraped off around campus now. Over in the 11th and Gibbon area, like 13th and Gibbon around the church up there, there's some really neat new designs of some smaller apartment units over there that I would like to see duplicating. A lot of these little houses around campus though, there's no incentive for the landlord to either improve the property up to a decent living standard for the people that live there, which the city can help with code enforcement. The city needs to look into these places when they sell or when they're going up for a rental, the city needs to take complaints about living conditions and landlords seriously and, and make sure that there is at least some standard of living. And I think if landlords are forced to do that, these lower quality houses are either going to get improved or scraped off and replaced with something new or nicer. We also need to support the university in their housing plan and get more units that the students will be proud to live in for longer than just the freshman year when they have to live there. So something that the students can live in for longer than just the freshman year and they get out as fast as they can.
Somewhat tough when you're on the tail end because a lot of the good ideas have been spoken. There was somewhat of a silver lining when Wyotech announced the closing of its stores. Laramie has never had a glut of apartments. That was going to create a glut of apartments in, in West Laramie particularly and potential houses. Because of that, we're talking about economic development, growing the city. Whenever a city grows, usually that involves higher costs of living. So those two kind of go hand in hand. The other thing that we deal with, obviously we are a college town. That's what's running the rent. People have to live here in order to get education. I'm not a big proponent of having someone from the city come in and inspect my rentals, but I do take pride in offering good, clean, newer rentals here, here in the City of Laramie. Some people don't. Incentivizing that, I think that'd be the golden question of how, how we can create incentives, carrots so to speak, for people that own these rundown nasty rentals to, to make them better. Couple of ideas of looking around for those old houses that need improvement, potentially getting a combination of high school students, potentially other students, I'm not sure the classes at LCCC, but to renovate those houses with the city and putting some of the money to do that and potentially making that, creating jobs as well as creating somewhat cheaper houses here in the City of Laramie.
Okay. The next question, we'll start with Jason. What is UW's role in the Laramie community and what challenges and opportunities does it present?
I think UW's role in the city is a big one. Most things on the campus side of town don't happen without some input from UW, which is good and bad. I believe that the university is a big draw for Laramie. There's kids now coming from all over the United States to Laramie because of UW and a lot of those kids stay in Wyoming because of UW. I think the city, working with the college could help keep a lot more of those students here in Laramie and a lot more of those families here.
I think Laramie is very fortunate to have the university and the university serves the entire state of Wyoming. But the flip side of that is, is can sometimes be a burden on the community just because of the tax base. And I think the key here is just to have good, open dialogue with the university. You know, we need to incentivize and engage students. We need to have places where they want to spend money, whether that's on retail, you know, or entertainment. But I truly believe that for the university to continue to thrive, Laramie has to thrive. And for Laramie to grow and thrive, the university has to grow and thrive. So it's truly a partnership. We just need to have an open, transparent relationship and figure out what kind of goals we can work on together that are in our, both of our interests.
Well, certainly we are fortunate to have the University of Wyoming here and we both rise and fall together as the City of Laramie and the University of Wyoming, whether we like it or not. They are the number one employer in town. They are responsible for bringing a third of Laramie's population to the city every single year. The average age of, of a resident living in Laramie is 26 and that's because of the university. So it does bring with it some challenges in terms of the lost tax base because they don't pay property tax and they don't pay sales tax. But the opportunities are, are quite plentiful. You know, there's no other city in Wyoming where the sporting events come to your back door, the cultural events come to your back door. They, we also have a huge cache of Wyoming's future here. We have, you know, these 18 to 25 or 26, or maybe 28, depending on how long it takes to get a degree. We have, we have all that energy here and we can help harness that, I think, to turn Laramie into a, a wonderful community. We have begun working with the students more through, with downtown and a few other partnerships to try to get their perspective on what Laramie needs to be, what does the quality of life need to be, what is missing? How can we keep you here? How can we get you to start your business here when you graduate your degree? We started, just two years ago, the city council started the Laramie Town Gown Association, which I currently serve on. It is the very first time in Laramie's history that the university and the City of Laramie sit down every single month along with LCCC, Wyotech, Albany County and the Prevention Management Organization.
As, as both a longtime resident of Laramie, a graduate of the University of Wyoming, longtime employee of the University of Wyoming, I, I sometimes feel that not everybody at the university, from administration to faculty, typically the staff at the university are local friends, family. typically the staff at the university are, are local friends, family, community members. But the faculty and administrators are oftentimes people from elsewhere and maybe a little out of touch or maybe don't feel included in the, in the Laramie community. It takes an effort on their part to become involved in the community events and feel ownership towards the community. It also takes the city being maybe more welcoming of the, the new faculty and new administration that moves in from elsewhere. Because a lot of them could go anywhere and they choose to come to Laramie for, for whatever reason. But then a lot of them leave shortly because they don't find the quality of life here that they, that they were really looking for. And so I think both the city can do better in welcoming the new, new university people to the community as well as the university can do a better job of encouraging integration in the community by the university personnel. The students, of course, are the students. Students are great. They drive business through the local community. They enjoy our outdoors, they enjoy our downtown. They become the entrepreneurs of the future. I just love to work with the students every year in that capacity. And I think we can do everything we can to improve the quality of life here for the students and make them feel welcome.
UW central to the city of Laramie. As the previous candidates have explained, lots of kids here, a third of the, third of the population comes here because of UW. One thing I'd like to see is more of a utilization of the skills UW has to offer. Many of the classes that they teach, the, the city, for whatever reasons, I don't, I don't know the exact reasons. I'm guessing for, for liability reasons, for skills, et cetera. They hire out, contract out studies, contract out all these things, which the university provides teachers and they have the faculty up there. I think it'd be a great idea to utilize some of that. Give, give students experience in the policymaking, in the creation of things here in Laramie. That might give them a connection to here in Laramie, to stay. As, as has been said, a great place for business, a captive workforce almost. Unfortunately, unfortunately, depends on what side of the coin you're on there. But plenty of, plenty of folks to, to work and create businesses. The graduations, the ballgames, huge, huge economic impact here in Laramie. And so I think the, the city should, should work with the University of Wyoming as, as close as they can.
I think the, the city of Laramie and the university have a relatively complex relationship. Because they don't pay taxes, this means that the number one employer in our town is not contributing to the greater whole directly. I mean, by, by tax purposes. That being said, I do think that they make up for it substantially. You know, sometimes maybe in a, in a way that doesn't feel quite equal, but, but always with that in mind. So they, there is an increase in partnerships between sort of the town and gown idea that I think we just haven't realized yet. So there are big benefits kind of in the works between partnerships between Main Street and the College of Business or the Wyoming Technology Business Center and, and its support for growing and incubating businesses. I think we have 85 tech companies in Laramie now and 15 more that will be up and running by the end of the year. So those are things that don't happen in the rest of Wyoming. Those are places that make Laramie really the model community, that make us the economic hub of Wyoming. So I think that we have to give the university its, its due on that and let them know that, or and really acknowledge the fact that we're all in this together.
Can I claim, can I claim a conflict of interest? Just kidding.
Are you gonna do that on the city council?
No, obviously UW is our main educational hub here for higher education. It's also our main job provider. I don't know the exact percentage, it's 17% of our population is employed by the University of Wyoming. That's almost a fifth if you round that. Like, that's incredible economic, well, in some of its challenges and in some ways it can be an economic anchor. In others, it can be an economic stimulant. So it just kind of depends on which side of the fence decisions from UW and the city land on. I have noticed by talking to a lot of citizens, in some ways UW has caused division in between the citizens and UW itself. And we've gotta bridge those gaps. I mean, we are all one community. We, UW is an island that sits in, in our city and we have to get along with it. It's not going anywhere. Our resources, obviously, we have this, it is, I titled this a cyclical source of employee base. So constantly it's turning out new employees for Laramie to, to capitalize on. It's also, the sporting events is a huge economic stimulant for, for us. I mean, on the weekend, we all know, football game, this town is packed. And all those dollars in some form come right back here that they spend. So, and it has its good and it has its bad, and I am done talking.
Okay, we got about 10 minutes left, which allows us really for about one more question. And then remember, after that, you'll have a half an hour to mingle with the folks out there and talk with them one-on-one. So as, as a, as the last question, starting here with Victor, I'll give each of you the nine seconds to make any closing remarks that you want. And pass along, oh, before I say that, here are the questions I couldn't get to. Here are the topics that I couldn't get to. And I'll just read a list of it. Municipal internet provider. Public transportation. Zoning ordinance enforcement. Seven cent tax. Colorado people. Downtown parking, YDOT. Downtown in general. Actually, if I could figure out a way to bring those questions together, I would have. But you, most of you addressed downtown issues tonight. Conflict of interest. Do other wards take word one seriously? City-county cooperation. And marijuana enforcement. And that last one I didn't throw out there, it was just one took over the line for me. So, the last question, or really, it's, it's an opportunity for you to sum up. And as you're summing up, I'll pass on one other question that Kayla. Someone in the audience wants to know how many city council meetings you either watched or attended in the last year? So Victor, go ahead.
Okay, in the last year, I have attended no city council meetings and watched three. I don't typically get out on the Tuesday nights. We usually have a poker game at the house, so I miss those nights. I'd like to say I appreciate everybody coming out. This is just amazing turnout on a Thursday night when I know there's stuff going on downtown that people could be, be going after. I, I love the interest. I'm very interested in serving on city council for both the economic development opportunities in city but also improving the quality of life that we have, which I think will organically grow our, our tax base. We want that organic growth. We don't wanna necessarily pay people to come here because then somebody can pay them to leave. We want people to be in Laramie because they wanna be here. We want them to grow businesses here, we want to grow their families here, enjoy what we have to offer. And that's what I'd like to focus on as a city councilman.
Laramie's important to me. My family and I have lived here for 12 years. And so I would appreciate your vote, but if there's somebody else that's more qualified than me in your opinion, I'd say please vote for them, simply because I want Laramie to be as great a place as it can be. I, oh, the city council meetings, sorry about that. I have been to two, I believe, in the last year. Again, just to reiterate, I'd like to serve on the city council just to, just to make sound policy, to, to serve the citizens of the, of the community. I wanna bring common sense solutions to some of the difficulties and some of the opportunities that we face as a city. And I, I feel I can do that. Thank you.
I think I would like to say in closing that for Laramie to be successful as we grow, to, to maintain the parts of Laramie that we all really love, the reasons that we decided to live here, I think Laramie is going to need to do three things probably. But I think that it will depend entirely on leveraging our economy, strengthening our community, and seizing our opportunities. We can encourage economic vibrance through continued economic diversification, fighting for fair wages, and investment in creative enterprises. We can strengthen our community by utilizing the preservation of our unique characters, our unique community characters, sorry. Expanding our opportunities for outdoor recreation and maintaining a high quality of life. We can continue to provide opportunity for all of our residents by working towards a safe and welcoming community for everyone, by providing affordable housing and safe and well-maintained streets. I would like to ask for all of your vote because I think it is just fact that every board works better when it's diverse. I am a young person, which is underrepresented on city council. I am also a small business owner, so I can bring both of those benefits to the table in this conversation. Oh, meetings. Zero meetings, watched two or three. And all of them have been relatively recent, mostly about streets, is what I've been watching.
So I'll lead with that answer. No attended. I've lost count of how many listened here at this point. Few people can attest that I put them on a loop and I listen and I listen. That's how you get work done, right? You just get bored out of your mind. No, anyways, I can promise you, if you vote for me, it's gonna be fun. I'm a bit of a jokester. It's gonna be entertaining. You can vote for me if you believe that I care about every single one of you in the room and I care about bettering our town and our community. Obviously, I'm pro-economic development. I'm not going crazy. Managed growth, absolutely. You know, we have to monitor what comes in. We don't want competition to run out other businesses, but we want fair-paying jobs, preferably full-time, fully benefited. But nevertheless, my qualifications are simply that I care. I can go on about my leadership experience and I've devoted my career to public service. And yeah, so I would appreciate your vote if you wanna have fun.
Attended, I haven't attended any city council meetings. I've watched nine or 10 of them and I've read quite a few of the minutes. But I get time, not quite the same as listening to it all, but I can, can get the gist when you read all the minutes. I'm running for city council just to wanna serve and try to help Laramie grow economically and population-wise, bring better businesses in and try to figure out what we can do to help get the money to, to the improvements to the infrastructure that need completed. And I'd appreciate your vote.
So I got to thinking a little bit after that LGBTQ question. And my background as a nurse is in trauma. And when somebody comes into the emergency room, I don't really care what their orientation is or what ward they live in or if they're a student. What's important is to focus on what's best for that person. And that's truly the mentality that I wanna bring to city council. I think everyone deserves to have their voice heard. And that's what's important to me is to listen. As far as Laramie, I think what we really need to focus on for everyone is a comprehensive plan for growth. You know, what is our vision for what we want quality of life to look for, look like, sorry? And, you know, how can we support economic growth in the community that benefits everyone? So I truly think that leadership is best done through service. And I, I'm looking forward to serving all of you. I think Andy has the advantage here on all the issues. She, she knows a lot, she's a smart lady. But I'm here to listen to you. I can think critically about all the issues and absolutely advocate for what's in Laramie citizens' best interest.
So I had to get some, some paper out to do some math on the city council meetings I've attended. I've attended five. She got five, okay. Jessica's attended five. So I, my best guess in the last 12 months is about 40 regular business meetings, 30 work sessions, and about 50 to 60 hours every week in volunteer service on behalf of the city of Laramie. That's the job of a city councilman and being mayor right now. My, I, we have, I am so excited about all the progress we've made in a few years that I've been on city council. And it's not just me alone. This is a city council of nine people, I am but one voice. But we have such a wonderful group of citizens that are dedicated to the service of Laramie that we've been able to move wonderful things forward. We're opening new pots of money, hopefully with the state, with grants to address infrastructure, to take our parks to a new level, to get our quality of life where we need it. We're pursuing new economic development strategies. Hopefully, we're gonna have a whole host of new entrepreneurs in Laramie in September, working with the University of Wyoming. There's just so much wonder, many wonderful things that are going on here. And if you can't tell, my passion is truly for this town. It is for my family, it is for this town. And my kids are very tired of me reading city ordinance system at night, but I'll tell you, if you have kids, it puts them right to sleep. It's fine. So I'm really hoping to get your vote for reelection and for a second term so that I can continue to use my experience and my expertise and my passion on behalf of the city of Laramie.
How about a hand for these folks? When our founding fathers created this country many, many years ago, they had U.S. language with regard to the folks who would, would run this country and make it a great nation, who would lay the plow down in the field and go do your duty on behalf of your community. So thank you. And I'll turn this over to the League of Women voters.
Thank you very much, Mr. Massey. For your exemplary work as moderators, we'd like to thank the candidates and we would like to thank the audience. No matter what the outcome of the race is, we encourage all, all of you to continue your civic participation and the audience as well. Please feel free to mingle with the candidates, follow up on questions as you like. We have to put away the chairs, so we'll be moving around among you. But look, don't let that discourage you from staying. Thanks very much.